Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Zach Bashir-Tosh.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the September 7th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Bashir Tosh.
Here.
Vice Chair Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Cor.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Agenda Item 2, Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, the continued Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for the public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes, analyzes, sorry, the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with the recommendations to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for Consent Public Hearing, Item 5A, or Nonconsent Public Hearing, Item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time. Yeah, yeah, please, step, step to the microphone and then go ahead and identify yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
These are item, these are, yeah, items not pertaining to the topics on the agenda.
Sure. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right, my name is Jose Ruben Rango Lopez, a resident of Bakersfield, California, born and raised. I just have a proposition, you know, to the general plan update, Bakersfield 2045 rise. May I proceed?
Sure.
All right, a little history lesson, sorry. So, Chuxton Beal, you know, the son of Marion Edward Fitzgerald Beal. He donated the city's first public library system on Chester and Seventeenth. That was the original location. The second location is now the Kern County Public Defender's Office. And the third location is, uh, is current location, Chuxton and Q. On Chester and Seventeenth, he picked that location because he also dedicated the Beal Clock Tower to his mother on that intersection. But both of those were later destroyed by the 1952 earthquake. Chuxton and Q location is now the, also the current site of the Amtrak, and now currently the Greyhound, because it's not on F Street any longer. Got razed and now they'll be building townhomes. So, uh, I bring up all this geography and all this history, not to ramble, you know, I'm sorry, as much as I'd like to.
Sure.
But, um, but because of my proposition, Bank of America, they recently announced that they're not going to renew their lease, so they won't be here next year, 2024. And, um, I just had the idea, you know, to move the library back to its original location. Did it once, did it twice, we did it a third time. And I just think it'd be, you know, an honor, an honor to. And this is one of the other reasons why. Want to move back to its original location in order to accommodate its growth, because Bakersfield is a growing city, it's only going to get larger, um, and to incentivize the growth in literary participation. The city has some of the lowest literary rates in the state, and in more parental participation and youth interest. And I think a library at the base of the city's only skyscraper would generate just that. As for the vacant building on Chuxton and Q, you know, some of you are aware, as some of you are aware, um, the high-speed rail will be conducted, the construction will be completed, uh, by the end of 2030. And, uh, within 20 years, the talks will begin to brew over, um, completing the rest of the track, having it run through Bakersfield. So, um, you know, what this is going to bring, an influx of population growth. And me, I know you guys got your numbers and you crunching and stuff, you know more than I do, but I predict the city will have a population of about a million by 2040. So, uh, we need a bigger library, we need more people, uh, interested, you know, and it's for the youth, it's not for us. We don't do it for us, you know? We're not going to be here when all is said and done, it'll be for our grandkids. And, um, but the old vacant building on Chuxton and Q, what to do for it, you know? Turn into Greyhound, Amtrak, high-speed rail building, because Greyhound, the one we have now, it just, it just isn't up to par. You know, I've been to the Oakland Amtrak train stations, I've been to the Sacramento train stations, and they do it right. Sacramento, they got a history, California up there, painted on the walls, murals, what we have. And, um... Yeah, it's a shame, to me, it's a shame, as a resident, born and raised here, it's a shame, because, um, the city's far greater than any of those two cities on any given day, any day of the week, any month of the year. This town is bred folks from the likes of Merrill Haggard, you know, true redemption story to Earl Warren, California Governor. We can do it, we can do anything, we can do it all. And we have. So I think it'd just be a shame and a disservice, you know, to do nothing at all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chair Bashir Tosh, if I may respond to Mr. Lopez.
Mm-hmm.
Jose, if you have not visited bakersfield2045.com, I would urge that you visit that. It talks about our general plan update, and you can sign up for updates on that. Or if you'd like to get with one of my planning staff over here on this side of the room, they can provide information on general plan updates. We value your information and input, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, I skipped a part, actually. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? So, please, no, I did that, sorry. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed on the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items until staff or commissioner request specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items for A.
Commissioner Coman.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Okay, now's the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the Commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the nonconsent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to, to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? At this time, the, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent pub, public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Vice Chair Kater, thank you.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle, thank you. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes. Chair Kater and Commissioners, I just would like to clarify that Commissioner Lomas is no longer part of the Planning Commission. I know she, her name still appears on the screen, so just to clarify, she's no longer part of the Commission, so therefore she's not voting today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Nonconsent Public Hearings.
Okay, now's the time for nonconsent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in the favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition will be given, uh, time to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on the item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with your staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bashir Tosh, planning commissioners, member of the audience. First, I'd like to recognize, I have a lot of staff that worked on this project over the past few years, um, so I recognize a lot of the staff members here. Also note that government agencies, military branches of the service use a lot of abbreviations and acronyms. As frustrating as some may believe, it's actually a very efficient and effective way to make big concepts easy to communicate. So what we have before you tonight is certification of an environmental impact report that I'll refer to as an EIR. It's in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, or Department of Veterans Affairs Community-Based Outpatient Clinic, or CBOC. Some of the items are going to go over, and again, I apologize for the overlay on there. I'm going to talk a little bit about the site plan, approval process, project description, SEQA, certification process and milestones of an EIR, what's in an EIR, including environmental factors, mitigation measures, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, alternatives, project benefits, public notification, findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and we'll wrap it up with staff's recommendation for this project. Per the municipal code, with few exceptions, no person shall construct any improvements on land which require a billing permit without first obtaining site plan review approval. There are four basic steps in this, is to accept an application that, and we deem it complete. So once an application is submitted, staff will go through, make sure we have all the components to adequately review that site plan. Once it's deemed complete, it goes out to our Site Plan Review Committee, which consists of seven different city departments, uh, and oftentimes we will include eight and nine, which are, are Wrexham Park and the Police Department. They will review the project for any changes that need to be made for compliance with development standards and apply any proposed conditions. Then comes to the Planning Director, who will do an environmental review under SEQA, and if necessary, will write an initial study, and then send to a public hearing for adoption of what we refer to as a mitigated negative declaration, or certification of an EIR. After that, it goes to the Development Services Director, who will take the information from the Planning Director and the Site Plan Review Committee and the SEQA decision, and then that director will make a determination whether to approve the site plan review, conditionally approve the site plan review, or deny the site plan review. This project is a new CBOC, located in the southwest corner of Olive Drive and Newton Drive in North Bakersfield. To provide additional background, because some of your commissions were on this board, this project was initially went through the entire permitting process in 2020 and 2021. It was approved by your commission. That decision was appealed by Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC of Beverly Hills, or PBV. It went to City Council, who denied the appeal and upheld the Planning Commission's approval. Later, the applicant requested the city withdraw the approval due to a SEQA lawsuit brought forward by PBV. Subsequently, the applicant resubmitted for a new site plan review, requesting a more extensive environmental review be conducted through the preparation of an environmental impact report. A little bit of information on a CBOC. These words established in the early 1990s as a strategy to reduce travel time to VA medical facilities by providing veterans localized fixed healthcare sites. CBOCs are VA-owned and VA-staffed, or can be contracted to HMOs. They're operated in a manner that provides veterans with consistent, safe, high-quality healthcare with access to diagnostic testing, treatment capabilities, and referral options. Currently, there are, there are over 800 CBOCs. This specific project has a gross floor area of 39,648 square feet, with a net usable area of 30,100 square feet. Single-story, 31 feet, and again, being outpatient clinic, there are no overnight stays. Services are primary and specialty care that include, but definitely not limited to, hearing, vision, and dental. So what is SEQA? It was enacted in 1970, requiring government agencies to consider the environmental consequences before approving plans, policies, or projects. It has the intent to raise awareness about potential environmental effects, find methods to avoid or significantly reduce environmental damage, prevent significant avoidable environmental damage by adopting mitigation measures or alternatives, disclose reasons for approval if significant impacts can't be mitigated. The California Attorney General's Office implores that local governments take seriously their obligation to consider potential environmental impacts. That said, it is also relevant to recognize that SEQA can be characterized as a litigation tool that allows citizens, or even business rivals, to sue or threaten to sue obstructing projects on thin environmental pretenses. There are different types of environmental review under SEQA, with the highest level being the Environmental Impact Report, and again, EIR. The cost and time to prepare an EIR are substantial. However, by processing an EIR for this project, it demonstrates the City of Bakersfield and the applicant are taking seriously the obligation to consider potential environmental impacts. This is how the certification process of an EIR goes, with some milestones for this e, specific EIR. So typically, these are a very technical document, and therefore, very few municipalities have the ability to write EIRs in-house. So we had the privilege of contracting with TMB Planning, who is a quality SEQA firm, and that was done in 2022, to write the EIR for the city. Again, the city is the lead agency on this, so what, everything was, was back-checked and vetted through the city, uh, and we, and we took the lead, other than writing the document. So in February 2022, once the contract was awarded, TMB Planning reviewed the project and started peer reviews of the studies. Per SEQA, in August of 2022, a notice for preparation was done for a 30-day public review period, and what that does, it notifies the public and agencies that we are preparing an EIR for this project. We received seven comments. Those were incorporated into the draft EIR, which was written between September 2022 and May of 2023, when a notice of availability was published, notifying the agencies and the public that the draft EIR was available for review and comment. We received five comments on the draft EIR, and in response, we prepared a final EIR, sometimes referred to as a response to comments, and that responded to the five comment letters, line by line. And so the, the response was provided to those comments. That was then sent out for a 10-day public review prior to this hearing, so there were availability to review those comments, or the final EIR. And in response, we received two comments, and those were submitted today, and those were transmitted to your commission in the form of a memorandum. The first comment we received was from the Channel Law Group, representing the applicant. They, um, recommended that your commission certify the EIR, and they also provided additional information on PBV and some news articles. The second comment that we received was from the Channel Law Group, representing PBV, and they recommended that your commission not certify the EIR. The justification they provided is that the EIR is flawed, no specific information was provided, therefore, staff believes the record stands. And that brings us to September 7th, 2023, where your commission is considering the EIR. Contents of an EIR include 20 environmental factors that must be reviewed. The seven that you see on the left, it was determined that the project would have no impact on those, so those were scoped out of review. The 12 that you see in the middle, those were analyzed and determined to be less than significant, or less than significant if mitigation was incorporated. There was one environmental factor, greenhouse gases, or GHG, which was considered significant and unavoidable, and that is in part because we used a threshold of net zero. And net zero is achieving a balance between the carbon emitted into the atmosphere and the carbon removed from it. This balance, or net zero, happens when the amount of carbon added to the atmosphere is no more than the amount removed. Net zero was used partly because there's no widely accepted significant threshold for GHG emissions, since the city has not adopted a climate action plan, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District has not updated the GHG significant methodology guidance since 2020. Additionally, Assembly Bill 1279 declares that it is the policy of California to achieve a net zero GHG emissions as soon as possible, but no later than 2045. What's important to note is that the choice to use net zero as a threshold is more conservative than any higher numerical threshold or comparison against business-as-usual assumptions. There are no provisions in SEQA that preclude the lead agency from applying a more conservative threshold on a case-by-case basis, and you may recall the last EIR that came through your planning commission was also a net zero for GHG. Because of using net zero, the project's impacts on GHG would be significant and unavoidable, despite the incorporation of mitigation measures, since the project has the potential to result in a net increase in emissions as compared to existing conditions. So mitigation measures are another part of an EIR. They are intended to substantially lessen or avoid significant effects of the environment, thereby fulfilling a basic purpose of SEQA. An analysis of the project as a whole, to include the public comments received, identified 18 mitigation measures that would do at least one of the following items that you see listed on the screen, thereby bringing all environmental factors to a less-than-significant level, with the exception of GHG. To prevent mitigation measures from being overlooked, a mitigation measure monitoring program, or MMRP, is required to ensure that mitigation measures are implemented with the project. There are 30 pages of monitoring guidelines describing the procedures for the implementation of the mitigation measures, project design features, and regulatory requirements. SEQA requires an EIR analyze a range of reasonable alternatives to the project, which would feasibly attain the most basic objectives of the project, but would avoid or substantially lessen any significant effects of the project. There were four alternatives analyzed. Alternative site was one of the alternatives, and this was specifically looking at the existing CBOC on Westwind. In 2019, the VA issued a solicitation of offers for a CBOC in Bakersfield. The VA evaluated four proposals, including three from the Westwind site, the current CBOC, and one from the proposed site at Olive and Newton. The VA selected the Olive and Newton site. PBV protested the VA's determination in the U.S. Court of Federal Claims, and all appeals and challenges were denied. As a result, it is beyond the jurisdictional scope to evaluate alternative sites that have not been offered to or selected by the VA, particularly those that have been rejected after a long and thorough federal administrative and legal process. Therefore, this alternative was considered but rejected. The no-project alternative, alternative is based on the proposed project not being constructed. Under this alternative, there is no guarantee that the current CBOC would continue to operate at the existing location, in which case, medical services would be provided elsewhere, potentially causing veterans to drive outside the county. The net-zero alternative is based on a redesign to a smaller-sized clinic to achieve net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. However, a smaller CBOC would not meet the minimum requirements of the VA, and again, medical services may need to be provided elsewhere. The Renewable Energy System Project alternative includes mounting solar systems on the building, constructing solar-covered parking canopies, and installing onsite battery storage such that the site operations could be powered without connecting to the electrical grid. Based on calculation assumptions, approximately 22,500 square feet of solar coverage would be required. This alternative currently also does not meet the VA's physical design requirements of CBOC, but it bears to note that there is a mitigation measure requiring solar be provided onsite if approved by the VA. Regarding the alternatives, these alternatives do not meet all the seven project objectives that were listed in the staff report and within the EIR. So the feasibility of selecting these alternatives is outside the jurisdictional authority of the city, because the physical characteristics of the CBOC have been approved by the VA as part of the already concluded federal procurement process. SEQA also states that if the benefit of the project outweighs its unavoidable adverse environmental impacts, those impacts may be considered acceptable. These are just four of the 11 identified project benefits. A full list is provided in your staff report. Two of those, just real quick, it does implement federal and state policy by providing needed healthcare to a vulnerable community of veterans, and it implements the general plan by developing an underutilized site that is adjacent to urban infrastructure. Public notification, we notified the certification of this EIR in front of your planning commission today through the Bakersfield Californian. We notified all property owners within 300 feet of the project site and those interested parties who requested. As part of certifying in the EIR, there are two important things to remember under SEQA. The first under Section 15091 is a findings of fact. This concludes that various design features incorporated into the project and the mitigation measures outlined in the final EIR are feasible, have not been modified, or superseded, or withdrawn. Really, what this does is constitutes a binding set of obligations that will come into effect if the EIR is certified. Also, under Section 15093, statement of overriding considerations, that your decision needs to rely on a balance, as applicable, between the economic, legal, social, technological, or other project benefits that was listed against the project's unavoidable environmental risks. In other words, do the project benefits outweigh the GHG significant and avoidable impact? Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that you consider the information in the EIR, the public testimony considered tonight, evidence in the record, and approve the resolution to adopt the SEQA Section 15091 findings, adopt the SEQA Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and certify the final environmental impact report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step forward to the microphone and identify yourself, uh, and then proceed.
Hey, good, good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Thank you very much. My name is Alan Fenstermacher. I'm with Lieutenant Tucker, and I'm representing the applicant here for the project tonight. I'd just first like to sincerely thank city staff for all the time they spend on this project, they've done an incredible job, and to that point, um, I want to assure the Commission that the EIR that's been prepared is extremely comprehensive. Staff's done a great job of analyzing and mitigating all the potential impacts of this facility. A document this comprehensive, I think, is somewhat rare for a project of this size, but it's completely thorough and complies with the law. I think, as you also heard, and as I'm sure you may know, the exist, the operator and landlord for the existing VA clinic has been consistently opposing this project, and they're the only comment in the record against the project, which was a one-paragraph letter received today, with no specific criticism of the final EIR, just generally opposed to the project. I would just ask that the Commission, um, consider all comments made coming from representatives of that, of the landlord, uh, with a grain of salt, because there's an ulterior motive there. For every month that this project is not opened, that's an additional month of rent for the existing facility, which we understand is upwards of $400,000 a month. This is a financially motivated decision, not based on SEQA or the environment. With that, I would, and my last point is, I'm sure, again, this commission and city's well aware, my client's very excited to open this project as soon as possible and provide much-needed services to the residents of the city, and in, and by opening this facility, we're actually going to improve the environment by stopping, forcing veterans from travel- forcing veterans from traveling outside the city and county to receive their much-deserved and much-needed services. So with that, I sincerely thank you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and respect the request that you approve the project and certify the EIR. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dick Taylor. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and former director of the Kern County Veterans Service Department, and I just wanted to make a few points. I am speaking in favor of your commission certifying the EIR. I followed this project for a number of years, and I just made some notes, and I think it's worth the visual impact of seeing all the highlighted spots on this paper, all the spots that...
There's a camera, actually, if you set it down in front of you, that thing that's here, yeah, it'll actually pull it up on the screen.
All those show... Okay, so there's that one. Yeah, it's not made out of crayon. So it's a Marine Corps joke, Marines like crayons. So I do want to, but I want to point that out, and the previous speaker spoke to that point directly about how, and I misspoke because earlier I had said that the current landlord was getting upwards of $230,000 a month, and now it looks like it's approaching $400,000 because there's a, every six months it goes up 10%, and there's a CPI index increase in there. So it is definitely financially motivated, and there's no if, ands, or buts about it. So I do want to, in conclusion, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Johnson for his comprehensive and thorough explanation of the project, and I want to thank him and the city staff for their great work on this EIR, as well as the contractors that did that. I appreciate Mr. Johnson's, he'll probably be mortified that I mentioned this, of his faithful service to this nation as a military veteran himself and as a retiree, and so I appreciate that, even if it's the wrong branch of the military, but that's okay. And in conclusion, I want to thank your commission for your commitment to this project and for your past and hopefully future support of our veterans. So thank you very much.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Chris Guionis. I am a combat veteran, and I'm here in support of the proposed new CBOC. I'm also here representing hundreds of frustrated veterans because of the amount of delays that we actually have to even be seen. I also stand here on behalf of 12 veterans that I lost due to mental health. These are my brothers-in-arms. I'm here also representing a handful of others who are currently receiving treatment due to suicidal thoughts and amongst other things. So it's a very touchy subject for me. Let me explain to you, my personal experiences. Staff is great at the VA. I've had great experiences. They're real thorough with their follow-ups. I recently went, and they actually contacted me as a follow-up. In the past, when I first got out of the Army, I was at Airborne Infantry, man, I had issues. My issues are not visible. I have four hernias, I don't have cartilage in both of my knees, I have a slipped disc and a partial tear in my lower back, and I have a partial tear in my left shoulder. I do have PTSD, and I have sleep apnea. So you can see with all my health conditions, I can't be seen for those conditions here locally, majority of them. I have to at times, even in the past, when I didn't have a vehicle or my car broke down, I hopped on the bus, 7:00 in the morning from here, and went to S.L.A. Orcepo Vida for one appointment that's at 9:00 in the morning. By the time I get back, it's 6:00, 6:30 PM, because it's only one way and one way back, the way it's route that they have to take to pick up other veterans. So yeah, they're providing transportation, but there goes my whole day when I can be a lot more productive and hopefully be seen sooner rather than later. Now, I want to touch on a mental health aspect of it, which, from my understanding with the new CBOC, is to also provide additional services that are in need. As we are well aware, mental health is a very big issue, and to me, my main concern was during COVID, I was like, it's going to mess up people a lot mentally. Veteran suicide rate actually increased, so did alcoholism, spells of abuse, amongst many other rates. In that process, I've lost 12 brothers. They end up drinking, drank themselves to death, or they killed themselves. Recently, I did a post on social media to have people come and support. Buddy of mine reached out, who's non-veteran, and told me that there's a veteran right now getting help, and he started getting help in July, when he originally called saying that he needs help for his mental health. He told them he had to wait a month and a half to be seen. My buddy intervened, and they were able to get him seen in two weeks. Two weeks, he could have easily taken his life. Now, I'm going to tell you about a different scenario, and that's two weeks here in California, where he's in Santa Clara right now. But during COVID, or the later first year, end of COVID, I had a fellow veteran brother who reached out to me, and his buddy that he started with was wanting to commit suicide. He ended up reaching out to me, he said, you know, I'm not a combat veteran, so I can't relate, can you please reach out to him? So I did. I was able to stall him, and we were able to get one of his brothers to actually be there with him. So he was able to get help, calm down, and he was able to get seen pretty much the following day. Unfortunately, he died four months after that due to COVID, by himself, alone in the room. And it sucks because he actually got that help, and he was able to get that treatment seen or be seen quick, whereas here, and this is literally two days ago, it took what? At first, he was sold a month and a half. Now, I've gone down to the other services that are offered here, and I checked in to just, this was in the past where I got help for my PTSD, and they told me the soonest they can get me in was a month, in a month. So I experienced that same thing. And then later on, got my treatment, and I actually called because I was like, you know what? My other buddy just committed suicide, I need someone to talk to. So I resorted back to here locally, the therapist that I was seeing. They were busy. They said, well, we'll have them give you a call right back. Great. No one called me back. I had to follow up two weeks later, and I was pissed. I knew I was going to be all right, but I was livid, because if it wasn't me and someone, another veteran actually called to get help, and he didn't get that phone call back, he could have also taken his life. And these are real-life scenarios and things that we, a lot of vets face daily, especially, you know, war veterans. Another thing, too, is our current clinic is very outdated. There's an ongoing joke on Facebook, it's a veteran page, where we take, everyone knows the flooring of the clinic, so we take pictures of our shoes or whatever, and everyone knows where we're at. We very much know it's outdated. The only thing good there that really is complimented is the coffee, because coffee's pretty good at the current CBOC. But I wanted to come here today because, yeah, I got a little emotional, but mental health is a big deal, as we all know, even family members who are non-veterans, there's a big push for mental health, and we all know that, too. And at the rate of, especially Bakersfield being a hub for their surrounding cities, there's a lot of veterans here locally, and a lot of them, honestly, when I was actually part of the picture, when Ken McCarthy actually did a photo op for the announcement, a lot of vets were happy. Two years later, like everything else, a lot of vets got fresh, yet didn't give up. And I'm glad it's actually take, it's we're finally at this point, but how many more years is it going to take? How many other veterans are going to end up losing their lives because they're not getting the proper treatment, or they're frustrated with the current VA system that we have to go through, find rides? Or what about our more older veterans, who are trying to struggle or find transportation? Oh, it's easy, go help on the bus. You want to spend a whole day for one appointment on the bus? Or not even that, you get dropped off, and then you wait the whole day, and you just start twirling your thumbs, waiting to get picked up at 5:00 or 4:30? So I urge you, Planning Commission, to please get this approved as soon as possible, so that we can help out many other veterans, and helps that we can save at least another veteran's life. Thank you.
Good evening, panel. I'm Larry Walker. I'm a department service officer with the Disabled American Veterans. I have an office in the clinic. I'm a Vietnam War veteran, and then I served for a total of 21 years in the Army and retired in 1992 April. This clinic opened in June. I became a patient then. I know the VA system quite well, because I've been using it for 30-plus years now. I've been dealing with claims for 30-plus years now. I do the claims in that clinic. I am now considered one of the best options for the, for the veterans, because I'm a volunteer.
Could you pull the microphone?
Oh, my apologies there. I moved here in '92 after I retired, lived in San Diego before. The VA facility on West Wind is long overdue for this update. I saw it new, now I see it old. It's not being maintained. The owners that have it, they don't maintain it, the VA does. I don't know why that happened in that contract, but all the money they get is pure profit. They don't put any money back into that building at all, and their money is, started out at $93,000 a month, and it is now up over $300,000 a month. Why? Because they were allowed, after the contract, to start bumping it by 5% per month, and this came from our congressman. That 5% bump per month is gone by an act of Congress. They can't be, they're not going to be allowed to profit from this any further, any higher, I hope. That is the true statement. They are known as Progress for Bakersfield Veterans LLC. What a bad name for what they're doing. They are not progress, they are holding up progress. That's what they need to change their name to. Holding up progress. We are here to represent the 40-plus thousand veterans that are in this county getting care. We want this done. I am a dog with a bone. I'm not going to give up until ground is broken. I'm ready to carry this on after this. If they want to continue to fight, we will be there to fight for this VA clinic. One of the biggest things of what he talked about, mental health, that is one of the things that will be increased in this new clinic. The size of the mental health will be increased because it is in dire need in this county instead of going outside, all right? I don't get my care in L.A. anymore, I get it here locally. I'm a 100% disabled veteran for 19 years. I want this new clinic done, and I'm not going to give up. I will be back in here again, I'll go to the council, I'll go wherever I need to go to make this happen. Please pass this. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner and Chairman, my name is Archie Sanchez, and I served in the U.S. Army. I served in Germany and Vietnam. I was in the military for seven years. I worked in, at the VA in Long Beach for 40 years. I decided to retire here in Bakersfield. I didn't realize that there was a little clinic over here, it wasn't a full-blown hospital like in Long Beach, but, I mean, I have to live with it now. And the only thing I can say is that this CBOC has to be built for the veterans. The clinic will be the first class, it'll be first class for the veterans, what I've heard about it, and this clinic, you know, needs to be built. There's no and-and-if about it. I've been going to the clinic over here at the, in Bakersfield, and I've had a lot of my health care, I'm 100% service-connected, disabled veteran, and a lot of my health care has been pulled back a lot, and it's not, I mean, it's unexcusable for what we have, as veterans, have to put up with. And I believe that we need to get this hospital built, or not hospital, but the CBOC built as soon as possible, and I thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Johnson, Geraldo King, and staff. You've all done such a great job, you know, and you need to be applauded, and I think you will be down the road even more so.
What was your name, sir? I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
A Rapunelba, Vietnam vet, served in the United States Navy honorably for four years, received the Combat Action Ribbon for my participation. Commissioners and staff, community and fellow veterans, as a senior vice commander for VFW Post 7216, it's named now after Leonard Alvarado, who was killed in Vietnam and was awarded posthumously the Medal of Honor. The first Kern County born and raised resident was Larry Pierce. Thank you for the opportunity to inform you that our proposal is very simple and very much needed, and we're very excited. So my purpose here today is the naming of the new clinic, that it'd be named after two hometown heroes born and raised in Kern County, Sergeant Larry Pierce and Specialist IV Leonard Alvarado, both killed in Vietnam, each awarded the Medal of Honor posthumously. Your confirmation and acceptance for this proposal will surely be noted today and written in the local history of our books for future generations and students and community and veterans. Thank you for your time, your hard work, your diligence, and the support you have is right behind me, and there's more coming. We will not give up the assistance and the support, because this is duly needed for the service of those veterans and future veterans that will be coming home to their home in Bakersfield, and by then, we will have the best state-of-the-art CBOC, and I believe that that's true, and I think you'll agree with me. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jose Lopez. I'm the director for the Kern County Veterans Service Department. I am a veteran myself, but I'm not here to express my personal opinion. I'm here to relay the message of all the veterans that we assist, thousands of veterans, on a monthly basis that have expressed their need for a modernized clinic. We assist veterans in all corners of Kern County, and this, the delay of this new building affects every aspect of life for all veterans in the county that have to reach out to Lancaster, Los Angeles, Fresno, all the other places around the city and county, rather than having the ability to do it here in person without having to affect their daily living, their finances, and their livelihoods. And I absolutely echo the sentiment of all my brothers-in-arms, the need for not only current veterans, but future veterans is dire, so I do support this environmental impact. Please approve.
My name is Ezekiel Camarillo. I've been in Bakersfield since 1959. I've seen a few things happen since then. I served in Vietnam, and I'd like to just say that Bakersfield has always supported veterans that I can remember. They sent a whole bunch of us to DC on the Honor Flight, and that was great. Personally, I want to thank everybody for their support, and I know you will do this, too. We need this hospital here. I came to the point where I told my veteran administration that I cannot and I will not go to L.A. no more. It is just a horrible experience to have to fight, you spend 12 hours just to get an eye check or something like that. You get on the shuttle and they take you away, and you don't get back until that shuttle makes its rounds and you get back over here. Other times, I went in with tremendous pain. I couldn't handle the pain. They said, well, what the... They said, "Well, what, the pill that you need, you got to go to Sepulveda for it." I said, "I need it now. I can't wait another two hours." They said, "Well, that's, this is how it is." Really? Well, if they know that needs to improve, let's just do it. When you're in combat and the leader says, "Hey, you got to take that hill," you don't say, "Hey, can we talk about it?" Or, "Can we wait another day or so?" No, you just do it. And that's the spirit of Bakersfield that I know of. Okay? So please, give us the help. Give us the facility that we all need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leely Marsh, and I'm not a veteran. I wasn't going to say anything today because I'm not a veteran, but after hearing them speak, I had the privilege and pleasure of spending my morning with over 200 veterans this morning at the Honor Flight breakfast. And enough is enough. Those people, wherever they are, they don't care about these guys. But I just want to remind everyone here that these people and the ones I was with this morning were willing to die for us, and they all know people, as you heard, that did. So enough is enough. Let's just get this done. Appreciate anything you can do in there.
Thank you.
Long time no see. You know--
Can you say your name one more time? Sorry.
Jose Ruben Rango Lopez. I just wanted to come up here and first recognize all the veterans in attendance and the ones that aren't. We're all in favor. You guys know who you are too. You will approve this plan. And they're just going to appeal it again. What's it going to take? This is a 13-year-old battle predates me. I didn't even know what was going on 13 years ago. I do now. I shouldn't. How many veterans do we have to lose for it to take? How many veterans do we lose in those 13 years? It's not solely a veteran's struggle anymore. This is the communities. And right now, as a community, we all have a common enemy, Peter Cohen and Cardinal Equities. So I come up here, what can we do at this point? Who can we protest? These veterans' struggles do not go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Klein. I'm a retired warrant officer in the United States Army. Served 22 years, did three deployments to Iraq, one to Europe where I actually went somewhere better than my family was living. I know, they called the deployment, but I also had some trouble with mental health when I was in the service. I sent a helicopter out on a medevac mission. That helicopter crashed, and I was the one that put them on that crew. I was the one that went to go pick them up in the helicopter that they couldn't have. There was a lot that I had packaged up inside me. I also went out to the scene to go through with the crash investigation team what happened. Needless to say, that was not a fun week, month. I still have some hard times with that. And I'm seeking mental health for it or mental health help. Two days ago, I was supposed to have an appointment at the SEBOK. I was the only one that showed up. Turned out that, you know, someone else scheduling, something happened. Not everyone's fault. Things fall through the cracks. Went to go get some help again. Went to the staff. The staff was incredibly helpful. December 21st. December 21st is the next available appointment. That is a long time to wait when you have stuff that you're dealing with. Luckily, I was, I'm part of the Disabled American Veterans, and there was someone that could help me out. So I'm going to the community with other insurance, other, like, I'm, VA is off to the side so I can get the help that I need. But please, just, we need this. And, I mean, came back, well, I came to Bakersfield because it aligns, I love California, born and raised in San Diego, but Bakersfield aligns more with the beliefs that I have than San Diego does. And I really like this community. All the American flags in the back of pickup trucks. Man, I feel like I'm Midwest. I'm in, like, every, this is the most amazing city in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and then proceed. Does any Commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express your opinion. This is only a time to ask questions. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair Bassertash. Actually, my question is for staff. You talked a little bit about monitoring guidelines, so there's some matrix to be sure that the requirements of the EIR are followed up on. Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Yes, that's the mitigation measure monitoring program, MMRP. And what it is, it goes through and it identifies different mitigation measures, design features, and regulatory requirements. And again, it's part of the packet of what you'll be adopting should you certify the EIR. But it summarizes the impact. It talks about the, either the design feature, the mitigation measure. It has who's responsible for it, responsible party, whether it's the city, the Bakersfield, or the applicant, the monitoring party, the implementation stage of when it's actually implemented so we can monitor that and make sure it's implemented at the right time, and then what the level of significance is. So it's a document that is used primarily in the very beginning during construction to make sure that, because that's where a lot of the impacts potentially could occur. And then it's followed up with typically on an annual basis.
And who does that? Is that you or is there, what department does that?
That is the Planning Department in conjunction with the developer.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Vice Chair Kater?
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for those in opposition, those in favor, and then a question for staff. So I'll start with my questions for the opposition. Is there a representative of any opposition or the many-mentioned PBV present in the audience today? Okay. Seeing no questions or seeing nobody able to speak on the opposition, I guess we'll have to transfer that to the comments and action portion of the evening. For those in support, is there a representative who would be best to speak about what the new facility would offer to veteran services?
I can a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
My question's a little, my question's a little targeted, a specific aspect of it. Could you describe any services that would be provided at the new clinic that are not able to be provided at the current facilities?
I may not be the best person to speak for this as a lawyer, but--
I was very impressed when--
As much as I love to hear myself talk, I do generally understand it's larger and has more mental health facilities and other, but I don't know the specifics, so I don't know if, yeah.
The new clinic is going to provide a larger area for mental health. We are going to lose some things and gain some things. Somebody talked about medications. We will no longer have a pharmacy. Well, that's going to be fine because the problem that he had, his doctor can write him a prescription. He can take it to any other pharmacy here in town that handles VA, which is dozens of them, and get their first prescription for that medication, and then their refills will be sent to them by mail through the VA. So that's going to be fixed. So that space there won't be needed anymore. But I found out today, I talked to the pharmacists we have, he will still be on staff to help the doctors decide what they can do with medications and things, whatever his specialty is, you know. Hopefully, the dental will get expanded. We've had two chairs forever. Like I said, I've been there since the day it opened. We've never had more than one dentist. There's two dental chairs. That's the VA. That's their issue. I don't know. We don't have to, I stopped going over that hill in 2010. Well, I was going north. I was going to Palo Alto in San Francisco. I used a primary care north of here so that I could do that. But I have since moved my care back to Bakersfield. Why? Because we have community care. All they have to do is when they go in there and they say, "Well, we're going to send you to LA," and they just have to say two words, "Community care." Oh, and "please." And it's in concrete. They have to give it to them at that point, and they have to be seen within Bakersfield by a doctor here. My cardiologist is here. My neurologist is here. I don't have to go to LA for anything except community care has got me into Cedar Sinai. I will go to Cedar Sinai to get tested for a cancer I may have. You know, there's a lot of things a veteran is in charge of his health. He just has to be spoke, speak up. This is what I want. Don't listen, speak. And tell them what you want, when you want it, and how you want it. And they have to listen. Community care is in. I've used it a lot. Any other questions about the new clinic?
Thank you. I think that addressed the question regarding the new services. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then for staff, this is, maybe the city attorney would be best to speak. The timeline presented in the staff report presented a fairly lengthy process.
Yes.
I was wondering if you could explain where we are as far as an appeal process and what the path forward is anticipated?
Sure. So tonight, the Planning Commission would be certifying the EIR, which basically would be the final step unless the decision gets appealed. If it does get appealed, we would follow our normal sequel lawsuit process. It would be a situation where the applicant would have to indemnify the city, and so we would both be named parties. If you have any other specific questions, I mean, I could, I can answer that as well.
So appeal, so it's either the process is certified, the project can commence, if I'm understanding it, or the process is appealed and then there's another round of litigation that is possible?
So you are certifying that you are tonight?
Yes.
So if it does not get appealed tonight, this is it. It doesn't go to City Council. If it gets appealed, it would go to City Council. Yes.
And then that could be subject to appeal?
And then that, yes, that goes through its process, another public hearing, and then we file a documentation with the county clerk, and there's a period of time to file the sequel lawsuit.
Okay. And then the appeal process would potentially lead to a litigation process, which would then--
It would be a sequel--
Be determined by--
Yes, by a judge.
Judge, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Those are my questions.
Commissioner Carr?
Actually, I had the exact same question, so I canceled my request.
All right. Do we need to move into rebuttal time since there was no one in--
We don't.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing item on item and return to the Commission for comments and action. Now that I can make a comment, I just would like to say, thank you, veterans, for your service. From the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you being here and how you've served our country. Means the world to myself and my family. So I have a grand place buried in Arlington National Cemetery. I've had the privilege of going to Honor Flight and going out there to participate in one of the best events of my life. I wish the current owners were here so that they could understand just how much of a villain they play in this entire role. It's sad and disgusting, to say the least. Hopefully, they're watching this. That's my comment right there. I'm looking for any other comments or action? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the EIR and accept staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Can I get a second?
If I could, I just want to say something. You know, I appreciate Mr. Taylor recognizing my career in the Air Force. But for the record, my recommendation on certifying the EIR is that of the City Planning Director and based purely on my experience, the experience of Assistant Planning Director Cassandra Gale, experience of Principal Planner Roque Nino, and the experience Associate Planner Louis Ramirez, all as land use planners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to restate, and I learned something about you that I didn't know. I'm going to restate my motion to approve staff's recommendation to certify the EIR for this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. Commissioners, please gosh your vote.
Motion passes.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items at this time?
I would just like to note, we will have a meeting on September 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item?
Agenda item eight, commission comments.
Does any Commissioner at this time have a comment they'd like to make?
Just to repeat the same comment, thank you, everybody, for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a quick comment, also maybe question is, in regards to this seat, has there been applications presented or do we know where we are in that process?
The city clerk runs the recruitment for that. I believe October 3rd is the close date.
I can confirm and get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all right. Madam Clerk, next item?
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:39 on September the 7th, 2003. Thank you.